Recording in progress.
Good morning. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, April twenty-two, twenty twenty-five workshop. Our first item for discussion today is to discuss possible amendments to Unified Development Code to allow chicken keeping as an accessory use. Staff attorney Kelsey Cardon will address.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You guys have a little bit of the Kelsey Show this morning, so we're gonna try to keep it concise. For the benefit of our commissioners who are new to the board since the last time this proposal was introduced, we originally presented a previous version, a previous proposal, and so we're gonna talk a bit about that today. But I would really like this to be an open discussion about what you would like the next proposal to look like. So just so that you guys are aware, our current permissions for chicken keeping are actually defined in the UDC. Currently, chicken keeping is agriculturally zoned districts only. Really, that limitation is for parcels that are three acres or larger. As you can imagine, there are very few parcels in the city that meet that. There is no limit on the amount of chickens or roosters if you are on a property that is three acres or larger, and there is no limit associated with that activity for chicken keeping, such as whether you're selling chickens, selling chicken eggs, or butchering those chickens. So there's really, if you have three acres or more, you can operate as a small farm operation. In August of twenty twenty-two, we made a proposal to do an amendment to the UDC that would allow chicken keeping specifically for egg production, and I think companionship is how that was worded, as a section five oh four under accessory uses and structures and temporary uses. So the other uses that are in that area are for non-commercial gardens, greenhouses, private swimming pools, decks, patios, things of that nature. We were recommending the addition of five oh four E, and that would provide for chicken keeping for purposes of companionship and egg production, which would be added as a list of possible accessory uses. Subsection ten would provide all of the parameters and kind of limitations for that. And then we would also have section five oh four H. So it would be listed as a subsection ten under five oh four E, and then five oh four H would define all the special limitations related to chicken keeping. So that included it as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts, a minimum lot size of point two five acres, maximum of three chickens on a lot, so it would set a maximum of three if you were inside the city limits regardless of your lot size. No roosters would be allowed. The chickens would be, must be kept in a fenced area at the rear of the structure. Chicken coops could be no more than six feet in height, and all coops and surrounding areas would be properly maintained and kept clean, so it did not become a nuisance. And feed must be secured to prevent rodents and things of that nature. And chickens would only be permitted as pets and for egg production. That word pets, we're gonna come back to in a little bit. Chickens cannot be kept for slaughter, so essentially you would not be able to operate a farm operation even if you did have that three acres or more. This would limit it to three, and you're limiting it to only egg production if you're a structure or property within the city limits. So in light of the citizen comments that we got after that August twenty twenty-two proposal, which was mostly related to wanting more, more strict conditions on what the coops could be made of, more specifics about the type of like roofing that you would be required to have on the coops. If you looked at our proposal, it only required that they be in a fenced-in backyard, but that essentially means that they could free range in that back area. So there was a request about requiring that they be kept in coops. We also, just from a staff perspective, have always had concerns about enforcement of this type of ordinance. And because of issues that we have had since August of twenty twenty-two, this is no longer the staff's recommendation. So as of right now, staff would really recommend not doing any more than what we currently have. But because we met at our workshop and we, you know, sort of got a consensus from all of you that you would like something proposed, before we go to the drafting phase, I want to talk about some of the concerns and issues that we have so that hopefully we can get your opinions and see if we can shape an ordinance draft that would be, you know, what you guys would like to see adopted. So some things to consider, the citizen complaints related to the enclosures. So other recommendations, I believe, at that meeting included a cage or a coop with four sides, a top, and a latch. That would be in addition to being in a fenced-in backyard. So they would have to have a coop, and they would have to have a fenced-in backyard. That coop could be, you know, movable. It's ultimately up to the, you know, kind of the property owner on how they wanted to handle that. But the possibility of that being a condition that we can impose, do we want to limit the existence of those coops to backyards? Keep in mind that that does kind of create some questionable things we may have to work through with our side yards. Minimum distance from property line. Other jurisdictions have a twenty-foot minimum distance from property lines. Obviously, that's very difficult to do in, you know, a jurisdiction that is as dense as ours. So your ability to be twenty foot from either property line and then also have, you know, a coop and potentially a fence at the same time, you're really limiting sort of the space and still the properties that would be allowed to have it. Minimum acreage. As an example, Jackson did include or allow for chickens recently. They made modifications for residential zones. However, I would like to caution you, if you look at it, that their residential zoning is a lot different from ours in the way that they define their zones. They do have essentially the equivalent of a low density, medium density, and high density. And they, their chicken permissions were specific to the amount of acreage that they had. So low density, you had to have a minimum lot size of one acre. And then high density, the lowest that it went was half an acre, and that was for single-family only, so duplexes would not be permitted. And again, as you can imagine, because of the sort of layout of some of our lots, those larger acreage sizes often are duplexes. So keep that in mind as well. And then maltreatment of chickens. How do we seize the animal if a chicken is being maltreated? I think I've mentioned before with some of you that we did have an issue with one of our, it became one of our nuisance properties where we had a complaint about chickens and we acted upon that, and we're citing the individual. And when we came back out, we found that the chickens were dead inside of a coop slash cage that they were in, where they just decided to stop taking care of them. Does that amount to an animal cruelty? State law is a little bit unclear. I think there's a separate section for chickens, but it's usually related to fighting. So we would have to kind of figure those things out with regard to our current ordinance draft. And then enforcement of that, because again, we can't, we don't seize animal. You know, we struggle right now to actually seize even animal cruelty cases related to, you know, our animal shelter when we're talking about dogs and cats. So we can act on it and arrest someone, but what do we do with the animal once we have it? And we do have a responsibility to do something with it, once we realize that there is an issue. The other issue is free-range chickens. A lot of people mention and say, oh, I thought we were already allowed to have them. Go look at the north side. Behind the bowling alley, they're everywhere over there. We don't have any ability, if someone were to let their chickens free range, they don't have a collar. They're not required to have a rabies tag, so we don't know, are we requiring tagging of some sort? Which some people do that for smaller birds, but are we doing that for chickens? So that we can tell where this chicken belongs and who actually needs to be cited. The other issue is the dangerous dog designation. So if we, and we can work on the language for this, but if we classify chickens as pets, the state law and our local ordinance for classifying a dangerous dog, one of the ways that you can do that is if it kills a pet, if it kills another pet. As of right now, we have had probably three in the last six months or so of dogs that have killed chickens that are within the city limits, not allowed to be here. And those people who have the chickens illegally are then saying, I want that dog declared to be a dangerous dog because it killed my chicken. Are we going to consider that to be different than any other fowl or squirrel or other bird? And if we are not, we need to make sure that we're curating to note that it is not, they're not for pets, despite what people who keep them may believe. So we can create an exception for that, and then roosters and the enforcement there, we have that same issue.
How will the dogs get to the chickens if they're in a cage?
That's the issue, is that they're not. And when they're not, we have no ability for enforcement of that, other than to say, we're going to cite you. And we can have a court order, we can bring it into code enforcement, and then, and judge can say, get rid of your chicken. But then the issue is, even when they're free-ranging chickens, we can't tell who the owner is until they come out and screaming and hollering that the dog killed the chicken. So that's the issue that staff has with it, is we can create all kinds of safeguards and all kinds of exceptions and detailed rules, but the law is only good as your ability to enforce it, and we would not have the ability to enforce any rules that we put into place.
Mayor's dog.
Is a convicted felon, chicken killer.
Of chicken killing? Yeah, okay, well, you probably make number four, because I don't think that we had you on the list.
Well, this was, he was, he was a country dog then, before we rehomed him in two thousand seventeen. But that was his claim to fame of breaking out of cages to chase chickens.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, animals are, they are animals.
Cats kill, I mean, birds, so cat could be the same situation. Cat could kill baby chickens or whatever else.
Correct. So I guess what I'm, I'm bringing up all of these things to kind of note what the issues are. And now I'd really like to hear from all of you on what you, what your opinions are on all of these, how you would like us to proceed. You know, do you have opinions on acreage or on distance from property lines? Do you have things that you would like us to put there? And then we would really need to talk about, you know, can we look into any ability for enforcement? I know I called around to ask other jurisdictions that currently have it, what do you do if someone's not complying? And they all say, that's kind of part of the problem. And for other jurisdictions, it's less of a issue because their density is not, they're not as, as, as close as some of our properties are. And so you get more complaints when, the closer you are, the more dense your population.
Any opinions of the board members? Staff recommends, denial, or some extreme consideration in terms of?
Now, when you say extreme, what's extreme?
In terms of?
Find extreme for.
Well, I mean, in terms of if a dog kills, do you put a provision that if a dog or a cat kills a chicken, are they?
Dogs are supposed to be in enclosed environment also on leash, so, you know.
But if a chicken crosses onto their property because it's free-ranging?
Or in cats roam and?
You know, I know the city doesn't recommend this. I think our constituents deserve the right to decide themselves whether they want chickens or not. And our president says that the price of eggs have gone down fifty-nine percent since he's been in office. Mr. Trump does not go to Kroger. Free-range eggs at Kroger are twelve ninety-nine a dozen. You know, so I think our constituents deserve the right to make the decisions themselves. And if they're not in compliance, then, you know, we let them know that they're not compliant. Pardon?
Thank you. All right, so we'll start on this end. Mr. McCord, do you have a position?
My position is what staff recommended.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright, position your questions?
Position is chickens.
You're pro-chicken, okay?
I'm pro-chicken.
Okay. Ms. Curtis?
I'm pro-chicken.
You're pro-chicken, okay. Ms. Ward?
I'm not studying these chickens.
You're not what?
I don't care. My concern is not with chickens. And in actuality, I feel like we're spending a lot more time on chickens that could be better served on something else. I kind of listen to, I understand what you're saying, that there's an issue, and somebody has to solve it, but we have a whole, whole community of children walking around with guns, killing each other. And we're talking about chickens? You know, that, that's?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Well, I agree with you one hundred percent. This gang situation, we've got to get a handle on that. If we can't, maybe we need to get somebody that can. But back to the chickens, I'm pro-chicken. I think people have the right, if they so elect, to do so. Have them give it a try. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, what you were saying, okay, Jackson's a little bit different. What about Alpharetta? There's a lot of communities that have chickens. And it seems like to me, it'd be very simple to find a jurisdiction that has, you know, properties such as ours and see what they say.
Alpharetta's very different in that, so we have a lot of infill lots by comparison to cities that were developed sort of after Griffin was developed. They have a much larger sprawling space, so their lot sizes are much more in conformity with what we would expect if we were subdividing current lots. But that's not to say that we can't, if it's, you know, it's the will of the board. So if you guys would like to do chickens, now that we're kind of in that frame of mind, I guess I haven't heard from mayor, but we can start talking about acreage, and we can start talking about those limitations and what you guys would want there.
We're right now saying, what, point two five acres?
We were originally looking?
I'm talking about now, not what we, you know, originally, but what are we looking at now?
That's what we're asking you all. Yes. Staff recommends denial, so we want to know what you think.
I would think at least a half acre maybe, or something larger.
A half, okay. And, and one acre, I do, I actually left my phone over there, but I had numbers for the number of acres that we had that were residential for one acre and on. So the county for, has recently done a proposal as well. They also do it under accessory use. They have a limitation for three, for, you have to have a minimum of one acre. That's their current, is a minimum of one acre, and you can have a maximum of three. And the rest of the language that we were looking at was very similar. They have recently proposed to change that for sort of a gradient level that does impact small farmers. So that would have gone for up to one acre is a minimum or a maximum number of chickens, and then one to two point nine is a maximum number of chickens. We could very easily, because of, you know, the size, our lot sizes, we could do a, a one acre limitation. So is that something that you all would want to consider, or would you like it to be?
I better the question first. Is there a way for us to, like, we permit golf carts? Where there is a permitting process where you have to?
Permit your chickens?
Permit to have a chicken coop to meet a certain specification? Where that, someone just can't just say, I'm doing three chickens, they actually have to?
We could look into that.
Where we actually regulate it?
We could look into that.
In a more, you know, more controlled manner, where you've actually got to apply for a permit to look at the distance requirement, same way you do if you build an accessory structure. I just, I didn't know if any other community had anything like that, that might?
I haven't seen anything along those lines. It seems to be if they permit them, it's usually related to the lot size. And then they say twenty feet, but again,
Right.
there's no enforcement of that, because they're not going out and actually measuring. You're essentially, you can look at GIS data and say, sure, this looks like twenty feet. But in our jurisdiction, that would be a very, I mean, that would be a huge hurdle. That would be more of a hurdle than the acreage would be by far, if we were to do the twenty-foot kind of limit. So is one acre something that you would like to see? You have to have a minimum of one acre, or?
I still think a half an acre. In my lots, I don't think it's quite an acre.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would say a half acre, ten acre, whatever works.
Okay.
I'm leaning more towards staff recommendation, but if there's a way for us to regulate it by a half acre minimum lot size slash they've got to take, get a permit like you do for a golf cart or anything else where staff has control of knowing where the, you know, so somebody just didn't show up with three chickens, and I would be open to that, but this?
Okay.
But if that's too?
I think my only, off the top of my head, my only issue with doing it as a regulation, as a regulation, is I think that we could do it at the outset for what it's set up to look like. But because it's under accessory use, we would really, your, your regulation comes in what's under that. So I don't know that we would annually be able to. It, it wouldn't be like golf carts, because that's not in the UDC where we're limiting how someone can use their land. I don't know that we can annually do that.
And then, in regards to the dangerous dog designation, I know cats, I see them kill animals, and dogs kill animals. Again, I don't want to see someone have to put their puppy away because of that situation. So right now, I'm leaning towards staff recommendation of no chickens, but would be willing to be open. So Holly, I know, has been adamant against it, and Mr. McCord, she's got staff recommendation, so it really, we had a three-three vote last time, I believe. Ms. Ward, you were absent, so really, it's your call of to move forward with an ordinance, right, or whether you're?
Leave it like it is. I don't, I don't, even if we had had an ordinance, who's gonna enforce it? You know, that, it's just gonna cause us that many more problems and that much more stuff to do. The chickens, the chickens are not as bad as the ones that are roaming around, as far as I know. We got chickens in my neighborhood. The chickens ain't bothering nobody. So.
So are you, are no one, doing an ordinance, or are you, you said let the staff win, prepare an ordinance?
I don't have a, I, I don't see, I don't think, I, doing an ordinance is doing a little bit much more than what we need to be doing, focusing on chickens.
So are you pro, or?
We just need to give staff direction, whether to move forward with writing up an ordinance to come back to us, or whether?
What, what does staff recommend?
Denial.
At this point, we would like to leave it where it's at, where it's three acres or more. I really limit agriculture. The problem is, like you said, you have chickens in your neighborhood. The police department has chickens next door. They're illegal. They're not supposed to be there. That's not three acres, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Exactly.
So if we continue to lessen the restrictions on chickens, that problem is going to get worse. We already get calls and complaints about chickens and roosters constantly, and there's really not much we can do about it. The less restrictions you have, the worse the problem is going to be. So for staff, I, I, I would love to have chickens, but that's not the community that we have. It's not the area in which we live. So it's very hard for us to say, let's put an ordinance in place, knowing we are not going to be able to enforce it. That's, that's not something that we would like to do. So we can do that. If, if the pleasure of the board is you want chickens, then we can certainly write that into code, just with your understanding that we can enforce it. We can't enforce what we have now. So that, that's sort of where we are. It's not that we don't want them. It's not that we don't see the benefit of them. It's just not enforceable, and it's just not good practice to start writing things that you know you can't enforce. So that's why we're at denial. If you tell us differently, we'll write it to the best of our ability and proceed the best we can.
So I'm a no right now in terms of the ordinance, along with Mr. McCord.
So if, if, if the vote is no for the ordinance, then that means we just leave it alone?
Leave it alone.
Okay, no, but, now that's one.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your information. Anybody else have any comments? Good job. All right. Moving on to discuss proposed amendments to Code of Griffin, Chapter Six, Alcohol Beverages.
All right, on to the next. So for the benefit of our new commissioners, I wanted to go over a timeline of the proposed alcohol amendment. So this includes what we've previously done, as well as what we have done in, in the recent months based on direction from the board. So we presented draft one of our proposed amendment to Chapter Six, which is our alcohol code, to the board on September twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. Following that, that was at a workshop. Following that workshop, we presented for first reading a draft two of that proposed amendment. There were citizen comments the night, I believe, of the October eighth meeting, mostly from, well, actually completely from licensees, either by phone call or in citizen comment at that meeting, who indicated that they wanted more input on that amendment. The board voted to table the proposed amendment and directed staff to seek that community input. So on March twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five, we presented draft three of that proposed amendment. We sent it out to all the licensees by email and provided them with a town hall schedule. Attached to the agenda is a very similar document to what we sent to them, because one of the complaints was that the document was very difficult to, to understand. So we had a lot of people who complained about things that were actually state law that we do not have the ability to be able to, to change, other than to make them more strict. So we tried to go through and create comments that would identify areas that were state law, identify things that were already in current code but were being moved to a different area. And when we sent that out, our goal, you know, was, was to make it where those town halls would be productive discussions. We also mailed out a notice about the proposed amendment to licensees, as well as that town hall schedule. For anyone who did not have an email on file, it was only a few. And then we held our town halls on April ninth, tenth, and the eleventh. We had citizens in attendance and licensees. There were a total of twenty-eight attendees across all three town halls, which included citizens, licensees, media, and commissioners. It did not include all of staff who appeared. They were very productive discussions, and I'm very appreciative of our licensees who came in and were very well-prepared to kind of discuss and narrow down what their issues were going forward. They were very responsive to the changes that amendment made between draft two and draft three. We did have citizen complaints as well that were primarily at that second meeting. And so for purposes of making sure that we can proceed today, this presentation, while we are, there are other aspects of the proposal, of the proposed amendment that are still changing, we are focusing our attention on areas that the licensees and the citizens brought up, or that the commissioners brought up. So we can try to highlight what is different between the previous draft that you saw and what is different from the version that is before you today. That version is draft four, which was published as a part of this workshop agenda last Friday. So that, again, that proposal is based on the feedback that we received from citizen comments, town halls, and staff research between that first meeting in September and now. So to start off, I wanted to highlight our current classifications again. So our current classifications are eating establishment, public club, bar, fraternal organization, or private club, hotel, alcohol beverage caterer, brew pub, which is actually a brewery in conjunction with an eating establishment, city golf course, wholesaler manufacturer, which can be a distillery that makes liquor, a brewery that makes beer, and then a winery that makes wine, retail package dealers, and specialty package dealers. So those are all the ways that you can become a licensee within the city of Griffin. We are really primarily going to focus in the presentation on eating establishment, public club, bar, and retail package dealers, because that is where the main changes are for even draft four of this ordinance. So the current classifications is eating establishment, which is at least fifty percent of total annual gross sales from prepared food or meals. That is a state law definition that is repeatedly, repeatedly used in the state's alcohol code. And brew pubs, which are eating establishments that also are breweries, so they are breweries that are able to serve fifty percent or more of food. And their barrels and packages that they sell, sell outside of on-premises consumption are excluded from that gross sales category when we look at how they're licensed. And then there is a bar, which is seventy-five percent or more annual gross revenue from the sale of alcohol on the premises. That is also a state definition. We only permit those in the special entertainment district. And then we have public club, which is defined as other, other than eating establishment or bar. That is not a very convenient definition for us to be able to use. We also define it as its principal purpose being live music, dancing, theatrical productions, or comedians, where alcohol consumption is incidental to the other offerings that are made. Unfortunately, because of a small line that was added on to our bar definition that was different from the state, it appeared that if a bar was doing any sort of live musical entertainment, that they could not be considered a bar. They would then become a public club. So that's created some confusion, and we're trying to clear that up, because if you are existing for the primary purpose of offering alcohol for consumption on your premises, then in my opinion, you would be a bar. It doesn't matter if you have someone come in and play guitar to people on Thursday and Friday nights. So we are proposing to have eating establishment, bar, removing the public club designation, and adding art and recreational entertainment establishment as a possible licensee category in place of public club to kind of clear up those definitional issues. So for bar, we would add the provision that serving of food and live musical entertainment is only incidental to the consumption of those beverages. So they are existing for the primary purpose of offering alcohol. In contrast, an art and recreational entertainment establishment would be one that is not a restaurant or a bar that derives, and I actually, this is an error, I apologize, you guys. It's actually supposed to be twenty-five percent. That's a modification that was made from the previous version of their gross sales coming from the sale of arts, recreational activities, and merchandise and/or food that have the principal purpose of offering art and recreational entertainment to the public. So that is going to include that live music, the theatrical productions. Shop classes, such as art classes or education, provided that art classes and art shops shall not include anything that's adult entertainment, obviously. We note a couple of the ways, there are a couple of the things that this definition does not include, which is bingo parlors, dance halls, nightclubs, and other events. They are specifically excluded. The intention here is that it should be family-oriented in nature. It should be something that kind of calls everyone there, and drinking is incidental to the primary art or recreational entertainment that you're providing to someone. So a couple of the examples that I think would apply that we already have in the community would be putt-and-pour, where drinking is incidental to offering the, someone to be able to play putt-putt. Opera house, where drinking is incidental to offering live entertainment. Or when we had them here at Georgia Axe, where the recreation of, you know, axe-throwing is incidental to, or drinking is incidental to the axe-throwing. It is also limited to the special entertainment district, just like bars.
So like stash studio, that would be in that?
Yes, that would fall into the art shop category. Yes, sir.
Like a Main Street players, what about like a, someone that does facials or does?
The salon would not currently apply because it would not be art and recreational entertainment.
So right now salons would not be able to get an alcohol license?
Correct. Well, and under the proposal that we are making to you.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, like Malcolm and Tipsy Daisy have been considered bars, but they do have, offer entertainment?
They were actually previously classified as public club because they offer entertainment. So that's what we're trying to fix, is they are actually bars and should be classified as bars.
Okay, so the percentage of food sale would go from 50 to 25?
It would not change actually for them. So they, they would be able to sell 75% or more of alcohol. They would have no minimum food requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would essentially just allow them to sell alcohol without having any other restriction other than the fact that they can't offer for sale, like stuff you'd have outside of a bar. Like if you're, you know, eating, like food and things of that nature, they can't all of a sudden decide they're going to sell motor oil on top of selling the alcohol. They would have to be, you know, bar activities is how that definition is sort of defined. Yeah, so it's really reorienting them to the definition that they should have been all along. But to clarify, for the recreational entertainment establishments, they do have a other, other sales of 25%, minimum of 25%. So for putt and pour, and I hate to use a specific, you know, business as an example, but 25% of those sales would have to come from the sale of the putt-putt or the sale of other food things that they have on site or merchandise or things of that nature. It could not all come from just the alcohol.
Yeah, remember the man that was here and he was questioning you about, what he does is, what inventory tax or whatever stuff it is that he's not coming up with. He's classified, I think he said it was classified as a bar, but was it? No, is that, he said, but he was not selling?
More than that amount.
50% of?
Food sales.
Uh huh.
Yes.
So would he come up, or was he inside the city limits?
He was, he was in the city limits, but he was not in the special entertainment district. So the only way he can operate his business is actually to increase his food sales. So the way that it would work, and we sent out a warning in October to say, when we look at your gross sales reports, you are not selling a minimum of 50% food and you are required to do that because you have to be classified as an eating establishment. So push more food. So that was really a warning that was given. If they don't do that, their license would have to be revoked.
But he said he was doing something else too, though.
Kino.
Kino, so that doesn't?
It does not. For the, the state law definition of eating establishment and our definition of eating establishment, even under our current ordinance without any changes at all, he is not currently in compliance, which is why we sent that email in October. Yeah, so eating establishments are 50% or more of food sales outside of the special entertainment district. They have to be pushing that, that amount. That's one of the confusing parts about the alcohol code because a lot of jurisdictions, you'll have something that is called a bar and a grill. And we all think about it as a bar, but in reality, it's licensed as a restaurant and it has a legal obligation under our code to sell enough food to be considered a restaurant. We allow bars to exist in the special entertainment district because you're focusing on one particular area. And as a lot of our licensees actually mentioned during our town halls, that allows our police department to focus their efforts on a particular area so we don't have people who could be, you know, grossly intoxicated who are outside of this specific zone. It is a very confusing area and we have gone over and over that. So I apologize about that typo that was in there. I thought I caught all of them. So locations, location restrictions for package sales and inventory requirements, there are a couple of changes. I'm going to focus on the recommendations because I have tried to note where they're different from the original draft that you saw. So we are recommending a minimum wholesale inventory for package stores selling distilled spirits or liquor stores of 75,000. In draft one, this was increased from 50,000 to, we were asking 150,000. So based on feedback that we have received, we reduced that. It is still an increase. And someone actually asked at the town halls why we care. Part of the reason is that if we are going to limit the number of liquor stores that can exist within the city limits, we don't want to use that limitation on a store that is only going to have $50,000 worth of merchandise as opposed to someone who may come in and say, I want to do a $300,000 liquor store. Because one of those, from an economic development perspective, we have to, we have to gauge that. We have to use that, that inventory requirement alongside our distance requirement in order to make sure that we are leaving room for economic development businesses, businesses that would come here to provide that.
How would you enforce that?
They are required to provide us with an inventory statement. So basically saying that they are certifying the amount of inventory that they have. And we've made sure that that's going to be added to the application process so that at the time of their renewal, they'll provide an inventory affidavit to Karen Bennett. Yeah, and their number of, their, their number of purchases that they're making from their wholesale dealers should also indicate that. So if we needed to, we could request that documentation. No new license for packaged stores or distilled spirits within one mile of another. That is a change. It is currently 500, 500 yards. And we are requesting that that be increased to one mile. There are 10 total current packaged stores licensed within the city, serving a population of 25,000. There was a good question at the town hall about how would this impact if there, if you had someone who was right on this, the edge of the city limits and you had someone outside of the county line. State law takes care of that and says that there's a 500-yard limitation there as well. So that would sort of be imposed if you had someone who was just outside of the city limits in the county with a liquor store. We would not impose the one mile for a business that doesn't exist within our jurisdiction. We would just fall back on state law. And convenience stores, the inventory requirement was previously 10,000. In the draft one, we were requesting an increase to 20,000. We have reduced that to 15,000. That is specific to convenience stores, which we use the state law definition of that as well. Additional requirements for packaged stores, as of right now, there are none. The only proposal that we are making for that change is that packaged stores be required to install sufficient lighting so that all sides of the buildings and entrances can be clearly visible at all times. This was actually something that was brought up of someone who came to the town halls. I believe he was a citizen of the county. But it was specifically for, for lighting surrounding those areas, which I think, you know, makes sense for, for safety purposes. We did previously put in a request for lighting of the interior of the store around the clock and prohibitions on screens, blinds, advertisements, and things that cover the windows. Based on feedback that we received from the commission as well as feedback that we received from licensees, that has been removed. So next is the consideration for granting of a license. This applies, yes, ma'am?
Package store question real quick. Was your discussion regards to having a camera system? Or is there one required currently in ordinance that requires something?
It's currently required for all packaged stores.
Okay, and do we have a certain pixel or whatever?
Yes.
Requirement on that?
We have updated that. The, and I worked with the police department to make sure that those provisions made sense. We will cover that in a little bit. I have the safety cameras in the slides.
Appreciate it.
So considerations for granting, yes. That's fine.
I forget it if I don't. Between Broad Street, Broadway, well, right behind the Stucky and the block that comes over to Solomon Street. Does the city provide the same kind of lighting, but I really know it don't, in that area? Is that not considered downtown, right front post office? What, because the lighting is really, really bad there.
Well, our policy is that we have a light on every other utility pole. So we did an audit back in 2023 and then we do it again all the time. They actually just added one right there behind Angelo last week. So sometimes they get burnt out or somebody?
And I, I, I thought about it when you were, you know, talking about the alcohol and I know a lot of people park back there at night. But I was at, at night picking up food at, just wing. And I noticed the lighting and I questioned somebody in there and they were saying that we've asked for, you know, better lighting in this area, but that's just a sidebar. Somebody check on that.
So considerations for granting licenses, this is going to apply to all new applicants as well as people who are renewing or people who have previously owned businesses and are moving to another location. Anytime you have an application for an alcohol license. I am going to go over the current requirements here because I think this is the area where staff is trying to address the citizen complaints that we had. And it's really going to be, we've tried to narrowly tailor it so that it applies to people if they are not complying with what the rules are, that this is the point in time where we can, you know, address that. So currently, the city manager has the duty and authority to determine whether or not an application is granted or a license issued. There are standards in the code, but it just specifies really the public interest. And it mentions the need for excessive police intervention, but we aren't really talking about how we determine that. Anyone talked about the anticipated effects to the neighborhood such as traffic congestion, noise, and light. And then noting that the interested parties, whether or not they've been cited for violations related to alcohol, alcoholic beverages. If you don't meet these, we can either deny your license or we can issue it, but you have to pay a $5,000 bond. In my opinion, again, the law is only as good as your enforcement potential. And if you're a business, you're weighing the cost of being able to operate in an illegal manner or a disruptive manner. If you're making more money than you're going to lose by giving us a $5,000 bond, we're not really incentivizing you to, to do what's good for the community. So we are recommending that we make this process more specific and that we create more options for how to deal with issues that we're seeing that aren't just revoking your license, refusing to give you a license, or saying that you pay a 5,000, an arbitrary $5,000 bond. So we're recommending that we look at CAD, which is your calls, your calls for service, your E911 calls, police and fire response as history before the renewal. It's compared to like businesses. So if you were in the special entertainment district, you're going to be, you know, you're put, sort of put against the calls for service related to other businesses that are in the special entertainment district. You're not going to be compared to, you know, Tim's Country Kitchen over there that, you know, isn't open till 2 o'clock in the morning. We're also looking at the timeliness of payment of the excise tax. So are they doing what they need to do with regard to paying their taxes to the city and other conditions that are related to the operation of that business? So are, you know, are they doing what they are supposed to do? Have they been cited, not just for things that are outside of, or specific to our alcohol code, but things that are outside of that? Do they have a parking lot that is completely in disrepair? And they've been cited for a property maintenance violation and they have refused to respond to it, refused to address it other than to pay a citation or a fine? Those are things that we can consider. It's how they operate their business or how they've operated any other business within the city. We have expanded options for probation. I talked about this heavily at our town halls. We would like to institute sort of a, a warning letter to have more communication throughout the year while a business is operating so that we're not just addressing a problem when they're applying for their renewal in November. And then they've got to tell us between, you know, November 1 and January 1, how they're going to fix their business. This should be an ongoing conversation and we're having those discussions with our police department as well to shore up the communication channels between the police department, city manager, and, and planning and development. Yes.
Question. Initially, when a person, someone applies for a license or, do they have posted bond then?
No. This would only be if they have a violation.
Alcohol, if that's not our requirement, did you post a bond?
No. And, and I find that bonds to be really rather arbitrary because usually a monetary kind of bond is intended for the protection of us if we have to expend resources. But that doesn't really solve the problem. That just makes it where the citizens are, are sort of not having to pay for having to respond as often. But 5,000 is an arbitrary number. It may not be enough to resolve the issue or it may not be enough to address the numbers or calls for service that they have. And it, and it doesn't solve anything. Nobody is really, you know, we're not telling them, here's how we need to get, we need to get on the same page. You know, what changes can you make to your business? What are you trying to do to, you know, fix the rowdy crowd that you have? What are you trying to do about the noise complaints that you're getting? Having those discussions, to me, is much more important than just making them put down $5,000 to get a license.
In conversation, when I attended the meeting, one of the things that came up was about, you know, I've talked about the amount of calls or the calls that were coming in. And one of the questions I asked was that, does it make a difference if it's coming from the owner, the establishment? Or if it's coming from someone else? And how do you hold the business owner responsible for other grown folks' behavior? So how did y'all decide that you would handle that?
So we do have a specific provision that I'm going to get to later that talks about the maintenance of peace and sort of the city's expectations of an alcohol licensee and when they should be making calls. It is the one thing that I'm absolutely going to read in, I'm going to read to everyone because it, I think that it really explains where we're coming from. But from the town hall perspective, we talked about how, as staff, I don't think that, I, I think that it's going to work to someone's benefit if you're a business owner and you are calling the police department and you were calling in response to things. To me, that should not be held against you unless we're talking about an extreme number of calls. And there is a big difference between, you know, even 10 calls in a six-month time period and 10 calls in a three-month time period. Those are very different. So by comparison to the other businesses that you have, we're, that's what we're really looking at. But we emphasize to our licensees that they should not be, and is not our intention to penalize them for doing the right thing because that type of communication is what we want. We want them to contact us. In the past, the concern has been that they don't because they feel like they're, they're, people who are, who are frequenting their business are going to think that they're turning on them or that they're attempting, you know, that they're running off their business and that they, they don't want them there. And so in the past, they have not called or they are under the belief that they're going to create issues with the city because we're going to look at those CAD numbers and say, you know, are, how many times have you called for additional service? If we are talking about an extreme scenario, like I said, where we're talking about 10 to 12 calls in a two to three month time period, that's the time where we would need to send notice and say, hey, let's come sit down and let's talk about this. This is what we're experiencing. Have a conversation between staff and the police department and the business to say, what are your ideas for solving this problem? And that is sort of loaded into this process where that communication throughout the year as opposed to communication only in November. If the first time we hear from the business and really is, is in November when we very obviously have a problem, that's where we're concerned. We want to know that they're making some effort to address it. Malcolm had some fantastic comments at that first town hall meeting and I think that was, was that the one that you attended? So he had some fantastic comments about how there, there was a fear of, of, of calling the police department too many times and that working against you. But he noted all the things that he had done such as if he knows that he's going to have someone who brings a rowdy crowd, who has grown in popularity since he has, he has booked that person. He went around to all of the businesses and he told all of the businesses, hey, I'm just letting you know, this person may bring a crowd. Let me know if you have any issues. He came to Karen Bennett and told her, let me know if we have any issues. That's the type of due diligence that we want to see. And again, I hate to use specific businesses as examples here, but that was a really great comment because that is exactly what this process is meant to do, is offer us options so that we're not just saying, shut down your business. We want to be able to have those conversations throughout. So part of the solution for that is approval with conditions. So if we know that we have a problem, having them make a proposal for how they're going to address the issue. And then their license may be granted on the condition or under probation related to those particular plans being instituted, whether it be, you know, putting in, you know, sound cancellation or something along those lines or whether it be hiring a off-duty officer. What does their security look like? If they are, you know, a, a, a public club, but it turns out that the crowd that they are getting, makes it where their, their business is really a bar, do we need to look at that? Can we have those conversations in advance? So a lot of how we're solving that problem is through, through stronger communication channels with our licensees and having those conversations earlier because they should not just happen around the holidays in November and December where it's they get their license or they shut down and those are the only options that they have. But in that same vein, staff is going to have to be communicating internally because the police department has to let us know if we are having repeated problems. And we need to also be documenting things and complaints that we're getting from citizens. But it is a balance, especially when we're talking about the central entertainment district or the special entertainment district because you have people who are living in an area where bars are allowed to operate. So that's no different. I use the example in our town halls where if I buy a house and there is no quarry there, but it is zoned and allowed to have a quarry and then two years later, they build one, I can't then be mad that someone did with their property what they are allowed to do with it. This is our way to respond to those citizen complaints and I don't believe we had any at that first town hall, but we did have several at the second where we did have people who lived downtown who were greatly concerned about people spilling out onto the street. So as far as the licensees managing their own, you know, other grown people, part of it So as far as the licensees managing their own, you know, other grown people, part of it is making an effort. We should see some evidence that they're making an effort. And if we see at some point that what they are trying to do is not enough, that's when we need to sit down and say, okay, what are our options? And I think having that dialogue allows us to think of more unique solutions specific to the business rather than making all other licensees have to pay for or be penalized for another business that is not responding to it.
So with that, we have a pretty vibrant downtown crowd at night. And the time that, the timeframe we're talking about when there are mostly the issues downtown, how are we providing, how are we going to provide a bigger law enforcement presence? Because at the time, that time of night, there are no police officers out on the street in, like in numbers in these other areas. So what, what it is that we're going to do to help deter some of these things with the law enforcement presence downtown?
So I think when we, we actually had a sort of a double-edged sword because when we had the town hall, we had some complaints about the foot detail. So when we did have people who were walking, now to the credit of the licensees, one of the concerns was that if six officers stand together, that's not providing, you know, the response that we need. So that information has been provided to the police department. As you know, there's been a lot of rearrangement and a lot of change as far as their, their organizational chart goes. And so a lot of that is being dealt with in, as part of that change. So I can't necessarily provide specifics as to how, how specifically they are going to be addressing that going forward. But they are aware that we are making this proposal. I've been in communication with them about what this proposal is going to be. Jessica has set her expectations with them as far as how they are going to respond. And we're going to take the comments that were given by the licensees that, you know, they, they had a lot of success when you, you know, you pull out the car and then at, at, you know, the time for everybody to leave and shut down. If that business is shutting down and they're all migrating to a parking lot, we'll talk about that provision that's in here. But that is a problem that's not on the licensees. If they're no longer in front of that business and they're going to another parking lot, that is an entirely separate problem that really becomes a law enforcement problem. If they are brown bagging, which is actually within, within the establishment, or if they are publicly drinking and it's not in a go-cup and they're bringing their own alcohol, that's something where we have the resources to be able to cite them. It's just a matter of coming up with a system for doing that. And so we're, we're heavily in communication with them about what needs to change and making sure that they're aware of sort of what their toolbox is for dealing with these types of issues. And I think from the licensees' perspective, you know, they're, they were happy to hear that we would potentially have more out there, but they wanted to be more specific. They, you know, cite them, you know, and if you're repeatedly doing that, they're hoping that that will have a good response for their business as well. Because they don't like if someone's out on the street and they've got, you know, a bottle of their own liquor and they're never walking into their establishment. It does not benefit them. So communication with the licensees is paramount, and I think we started that with town halls. And that's going to continue. So I hate that I can't give any specifics for you, but we are in, in communication, constant communication at this point with the police department about how we're going to address that problem. So in addition to that, on this kind of how we're doing the, the new applications and the renewals, we do have an option for them, if they are going to accept a probationary license, to waive their future revocation or suspension hearing. And that's for the sake of time. And also just because if we're granting you a probationary license, you really, if, if you're not complying with it, that was your one opportunity, that was your one shot, your one chance. We are also requesting that they have a certificate of completion for buildings for which a CO is already issued. So you may have taken over a building that is used as a clothing store and then you're redoing it for it to be used as a bar or a restaurant. Fire code is very finicky. If it had a dance floor, apparently that changes whether or not you need a sprinkler system. If you're a, if you're doing food versus not doing food, it changes whether or not you need a sprinkler system. So we need to see those CCs, which is a certificate of completion, to know that they've done what they need to do to make sure that their type of business and their model of business can operate there. We're also requiring that they get a letter from the building inspector and fire marshal, kind of to those, that same effect. Nothing has changed related to the license and permit fees, but I did kind of want, want to put them up front for you all. So by, and by nothing, I mean, nothing has changed from draft one. So we are asking for an increase for eating establishment, wine tasting rooms, and hotels for their beer and wine license to be increased to $750. For public clubs and bars, again, that's being changed to bar and art and recreational entertainment establishment. Those are going to remain the same, which is $1,000 for beer and wine and $5,000 for distilled spirits. But that distilled spirits license includes beer and wine. For private clubs and fraternal organizations, we are asking for an increase to beer and wine from $350 to $500. And distilled spirits from $1,000 to $500. But again, distilled spirits includes beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And then lastly, the alcohol beverage catering license, the event permit license, we're asking for an increase from $25 to $50. That $50 will be per day for each event with a three-day maximum. Suspension and revocation, the grounds and the procedure, again, I'm focusing on the recommendations here. So no license suspended or revoked except for due cause and after a hearing unless they waive that hearing. So that's kind of calling back the new applications and renewals. If they waive the hearing by accepting a probationary license, then we would be able to revoke if they violated the terms of that probation. We are incorporating the impact on the neighborhood, timely payment of excise tax as due causes for revocation and/or suspension. But we're being more specific about that. We're referencing CAD files. We're referencing objective data that we can point to and say, here's why this is different. Here's why this is a problem. What are we going to do about it? And lastly, the current code actually says that a hearing officer is just appointed by the board and that they can't have a conflict. But it's, nobody really knows what that meant. They had to be an attorney. Did it mean that they couldn't have any association with the city? It was not clear. We have, are proposing that the city municipal judge be listed as the person, because you are appointing him to the board. He hears our nuisance cases, he hears our code enforcement cases, and if he's neutral in that regard, he can be neutral for alcohol code. If there is a conflict of interest, for example, if Judge Howell, if it was a bar that was right next to his business and he was a person who complained about it, he could recuse himself and then it would go to our associate judge, which is Judge Reeves. Inspection authority of the city, so this is really getting more specific. Right now, it just says at all reasonable times. We are recommending that the language be changed to include that they shall at all times during periods allow by, by law and during the operation of, the legal operation of the business, that they be open for inspection by the city. Again, that's currently the standard, but at all reasonable times wasn't specific enough. And that if it's being used after hours by employees or the owners or their agents, that the premises can still be inspected at that time. So they can't just lock the door and say, we're closed for business in order to avoid being inspected. Next is days and hours of operation. And we have had a change based on feedback that we received at the town hall, so I want to make sure that this information's clear. So for eating establishments and hotels, it's Monday to Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And on Sunday, from 11:00 AM to midnight. That 11:00 AM was based on a referendum that was voted in. That's the brunch law that the constituents said that they, they wanted to adopt. And midnight is the, the limit that we currently have under our, our law, under our ordinance. Other on-premises consumption, which would be bars and your art and recreational entertainment establishments that are on-premises consumption would be 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. That was previously, we were proposing that we stop at midnight in draft one, and then we recommended 1:00 AM. After feedback from our licensees, they indicated that that would actually make it very difficult for them to be able to operate their business because of how they do their days and hours of operation. And we actually had several people who made very important points that if we close at 1:00 AM, people are still not going home till 2:00. So there's, we're, we're saying dispersed out into the city, which makes it more difficult for concentrated law enforcement response. They also made the comment that when you do that, you make it more difficult for them to consume the amount of alcohol that they have ordered in a, in a slow and kind of time-appropriate span. So we're encouraging them to just chug as quickly as possible and get as drunk as they can before they leave. And there is some truth to that. So we have done a modification to make it where it will stop at 2:00 AM. Currently, it's 1:55, so this is actually five minutes after what the current allowance would be for Monday to Saturday. Sunday, it's 12:00 PM to midnight because the brunch law does not include that 11:00 AM for bars. That's only for on-premises eating establishment consumption. But it would stop at midnight on Sundays, so that does need to be clear for our licensees.
On Sunday night going into Monday or Sunday coming into?
Sunday going into Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Tables must be cleared of all alcoholic drinks 30 minutes after the latest sales time. That is currently the obligation under our code. The biggest difference here is that that would change it to 2:30 AM. They would be clearing drinks and bars have to close for business one hour after the latest sale. So they would have to close for business at, I apologize, there is another typo in here. At 3:00 AM instead of 3:30 AM. And at 1:00 AM instead of 1:30 AM. That is correct in your, in your code, by the way, in the draft that we have. That means that no people should be present on the interior other than your employees and people who are closing up shop. So we can't just close the door, say, we're closed for business and think that that's going to work. It creates fire, it's fire safety concerns. Next is security camera requirements. So right now, this, the obligation for security cameras does apply to packaged retailers for on-premises consumption, but we are requesting that that be added to bars. We are also emphasizing when the footage has to be provided because the police department has had issues where someone says, well, I don't have the login. And so a week later, they haven't received the footage back from them and they don't know at what point we cite. Even if they were to cite, it was only $50 for them to not provide the footage. And $50 is not a significant enough incentive for someone to provide footage, especially when we're talking about potential criminal activity on, on the premises. So we are saying that they have to provide the footage within 24 hours to the police department upon request. This is very easy to do considering when you have a ring doorbell situation, you can pull that footage immediately when you have an officer come to your house. If you were to have someone, you know, break into your home, the same thing would apply to these businesses. And if they fail to provide it within 24 hours, that would be caused for adverse action. We have made it where it is up to a $1,000 fine, which is our standard fine amount. If they are at that point given a 10-day remedy period where they are required to fix the problem, if they have not fixed it within, within that 10-day time period, then at that point, we can cite for each day up to $1,000 that they have the violation. So we're trying to incentivize them to fix the issue. We can also do inspections routinely just to go out and see whether or not they do have camera operating at that point in time. It is also grounds for suspension, revocation, or sanction of the licensee. So if they repeatedly had issues with their cameras, that's an indication to us at the end of the year. It's one of the things that can be considered in whether or not we should renew their license. And a probationary license could be issued with that as a condition. So the probationary license and post-officers. So previously, we had said that for bars, we were going to require a post-certified officer after having conversation with our licensees at town halls and in communication between that first September meeting and the March draft. We have made it where it will only be a condition of a probationary license. So, or it can be a condition of a probationary license. It really depends on what they're being put on probation for. So they could be required to hire an off-duty certified, post-certified City of Griffin police officer or sheriff's deputy as additional security. However, they are not checking IDs and they are not keeping up with the number of people they have in their establishment for occupancy load. That's what a bouncer is for. And there are state law requirements related to the standards for who, who can be a bouncer and their age requirements, their training, things of that nature.
If they take the initiative to get their own, do you have a post-certified Griffin or sheriff officer? Would that be taken into consideration if there was a situation that arises that could potentially, I mean, if they do their due diligence, would that be taken into context?
Yes. And that's what we talked about at the town halls, that that's the type of thing we want to see is that they recognize that they have an issue and they want more security. So it shouldn't just fall on us to say, hey, have you considered that you may need this? And we actually had licensees who indicated that that is why they hire two of their own private security that they use as bouncers as well as two officers, and they did that, you know, routinely. And, and we're happy to do it. So if we see that they're taking that sort of initiative, that factors in heavily. Pricing, advertising, and service limits. So there's currently no pricing or service limitation other than those imposed by state law. We are just going to stick with the state law provisions with one exception that needs to be made more specific, which is that a person who is selling for on-premises consumption at a bar cannot sell, offer to sell, or deliver distilled spirits by the bottle. So under no conditions would you be able to determine whether or not someone was going to be intoxicated by the end of that bottle. And that's really, the, the state law says that you have to evaluate whether or not someone is intoxicated when you serve them. It's impossible to also determine whether or not someone is offering that alcohol to other people whose IDs have not been inspected, and that was a problem that our licensees also brought up. So we're hoping that this will kind of resolve the worst of those problems. It's also, we have a three-tier system in Georgia for state law, and you're supposed to buy liquor bottles from wholesale dealers or from a package dealer. So we shouldn't just be handing out whole liquor bottles to people. Next is on-premises consumption building requirements. We had a lot of complaints about this, so we actually cleared up some language between draft three and draft four. We are still requiring the CO, CC, and other planning and zoning letter as part of the application to certify that they meet all of the requirements they need to meet. But we have language in there that no screens, blinds, curtains, partitions, articles, or other things may obstruct the interior view of tables, booths, or other areas where customers are served or where they sit. There was concern from the licensees that that wasn't specific enough because it made it sound as if they couldn't have blinds or curtains on the windows from the exterior looking interiors of their establishment. So we have added language that nothing in that should prevent them from using blinds or curtains or other window treatments. This is intended for interior partitions only, so we shouldn't have curtains covering booths. That's really what that is intended for. Order required on licensed premises. So this is the famous language that I've been talking about. And I read this at two of the three town hall meetings. And I'm going to read it now because I really think that this solves a lot of the issues that we were having as staff. And I'm hoping it also addresses the concerns that the licensees had. So licensees, agents, managers, and employees shall be responsible for keeping an orderly place and shall not permit any employee, patron, or other person to cause a disturbance or engage in loud, boisterous, lewd, or obscene conduct or practice within the establishment without sufficient consequence. So that's inside the establishment. If licensees, agents, employees, and/or managers know or reasonably should know that patrons or persons directly outside of the licensed premises are standing, sitting, mingling, or assembling in a manner that causes or contributes to disturbances, illegal acts, or littering of trash or bottles generated from the licensee's establishment, the license she should, licensee should make efforts to address the activity, including calling law enforcement if necessary. It shall be the responsibility of the licensee to provide reasonable measures to safeguard patrons and employees while on their premises. In the event of an adverse action due to a violation of this section, a probationary license may be issued requiring an action plan to mitigate the impact of disorderly patrons, including requiring licensee to retain off-duty City of Griffin post-certified officers or Spalding County Sheriff's deputies as additional securities, requiring cameras or other solutions. And the cameras are included in there because this could also apply to restaurants. So we're trying to account for that. Are there any additional questions? I apologize for the typos that I had, guys.
Are there any questions from board members? So I want to commend staff in terms of the public hearings. I heard back from a couple of patrons and they were overwhelmed with your professionalism and detail and taking their concerns from last year with concern. They said they'd be willing to come stand up and support this 100%.
Thank you.
Very pleased with them.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from anybody? All right. Ms. O'Connor, do you have anything today?
This will be on your agenda in May, so there will have to be two readings of this. We did let people know at the town halls that they are able to come and speak tonight or at any of the meetings in May and so that you can receive their comments. But if you have things, once you have a chance to review this draft, that you want to see that aren't in the draft, we need to know prior to putting it on the agenda. Of course, we can make any kind of sort of nominal changes between first and second reading, but we do plan on putting that on the May 13 agenda for this.
The only question I may have was to mention in regards to like salons, having wine and stuff. Are there other jurisdictions that have that provision available for a license to, just, just if that does come up?
There are additional categories that we could add. My concern is they are very broad. So I don't know how we narrowly tailor it because of how we actually license businesses. But if you are a retail person, there are some where we would say salon. But like a wedding dress shop, for example, may also want the same benefit. But what's the difference between a wedding dress shop and just a regular retail clothing store? So that's the concern is that you, you kind of open up a can of worms. And I don't know that we have the police force at this time to be able to enforce something like that.
Doug, that has come up many times in the past.
Doug, that has come up many times in the past. We actually asked for an opinion from the Department of Revenue several years ago and a lot of these places like the beauty salons and whatnot are simply buying the product themselves from a package store or grocery store, wine and stuff, and then giving it away to the patrons and not actually separately charging for it. State says that is illegal. That's a distribution of alcohol and that they cannot do that. They have to have a license to do it. So, we've never proposed anybody having a license. We've used that as our justification in the past for telling these people they're violating the law, state law.
And if someone brown bagged it into that establishment, they're violating state law as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
And local.
Okay. Awesome. Great job. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting today? Send the hearing word with the motion. Second by Commissioner McCord. Thank you. And I'll raise your hand signal for the adjournment. Seven, six, zero. We'll see y'all tonight at 6:00.